So I'm gonna start this meeting at 6:34 PM. First, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is optional, followed by the following sign.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so the first thing on the agenda is to amend the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I sent an email out to the board. I was notified yesterday that the RLA request, they're not ready. So we're not gonna be doing that time.
Alright, so that's the first one under new business. We're gonna start off. Do we have to vote for that?
No, because I mean-
Okay, very good.
-intending about that.
The next order of business is to approve the previous minutes from December 4.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that. I can second that, right?
Yeah.
Ryan, how do you, or do we have any discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, so the minutes have passed. The next order of business is public comments for items not listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comments tonight? Alright, then we're gonna get right into new business. The first is a discussion item, and it's the budget discussion with the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Committee.
Okay, so we have three of the four members that has been appointed. Thank you all, and all returning members. And the purpose of this being on the agenda is just introductions and to put out what objectives may be going through the budget process. I have a draft budget completed. We're going through now for accuracy, and we're still waiting for some insurance numbers and things like that. I think I sent out to everybody. Everybody has the schedule of when they're gonna get the budget and then the meetings, and they're basically every Wednesday in January. Where the format that I'm expecting is the same as in the past, where each Wednesday will be different departments. They'll go through their detail, and each meeting will have an opportunity to discuss additions or reductions from the budget. But this is more of what directions do you wanna go? So that there's not surprises halfway through. Well, hello. Have a seat. So maybe just introductions for people who don't know everybody.
Start with some introductions?
Start with some introductions with our Budget Committee.
Thanks for having me.
I can go first. I'm put my clock in, President Windsor, because that's why I'm here.
This is year two for you, right?
Year two.
Okay.
Kathy Boy, this is year three for me on the Budget Committee. I'm President, year three.
I'm Jenny Freeman, and this is my inaugural Budget Committee session, right here.
Welcome, Jenny. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you guys for joining us.
I'm Tara Howard on the Select Board. I don't know if we're introducing ourselves or just them.
Paul Woodman, member of the Select Board. And prior, my prior year to being on the Select Board, I was a member of the Budget Committee too. So I just wanna thank everyone for stepping up and doing this. It's much appreciated.
Ryan Palmer. Tom Marsh, obviously.
And it's me. Alright. So you want me to facilitate, or you've got a-
So are we having a discussion about what we wanna see with the fiscal?
Yes.
Okay.
That's like, I'll take notes, but I have copies of our existing budget, just to give an idea of how it's broken out, where money gets spent and things like that. The budget that you will get for the coming year will be in a similar format to this, but it'll show last year's budget and actual this year's budget and the proposed budget and the percentage changes over those concepts that you'd see there. So, and we currently have a survey out that will close this weekend. I think now we had, I sent out a separate email and a couple of Facebook posts. I think we're a little over 200 responses. 230, 240 seems to be the same thing every year. So that's going on. If you haven't filled it out, and anybody who sees this, take the time to fill it out. But that also gives guidance on what the community might be thinking. But I hear from you folks all the time. Guys wanna draw straws to see who has to go first, or you go, so.
Yeah, we have some there. I think it's best whenever you're getting from. Tom, you know what, explaining for people that may not understand your, it took me a minute to go through it, and I follow where it's headed now, but it might be confusing if somebody doesn't know how to read this line to line to make out what it's about.
Okay.
Because obviously, the revenue side evidence gonna be, look different than the expenditure side. So at least thinking where the policies lean and how it's worked, okay.
Oh, see, now you're gonna ask me to explain something I don't understand. So-
I can explain it to you.
That, yeah, you will, so the budget is all the revenue first, and then all the expenses that follow. And the first three lines that, what you're looking at, the top on real taxes, it says that because that's how the software sets up, capital and reserve. Those are the only three lines that represent income from taxation. Every line after that is revenue from another source, either state funding or fees for different things. So Windsor does have a unique position in that we have quite a bit of non-tax revenue. And we'll get into it later. But the other thing that I certainly find confusing is on the budget side, you don't see any parentheses. On the actual side, the parentheses are not negatives. They're, they're a positive number. If there is a negative number, which does occur, if you look on page three, there's some ambulance fees. Line two says ambulance patience, or line one is ambulance, where do we go? Not down here. Oh, yeah, so prior year bad debt. We budget 75,000. That means we're budgeting to write off 75,000. Then on the other side, so far, we've written off 22. So it looks like a positive number, but that's money that we're taking away from revenue. So that's just the way the accounting software works. So the other thing that is, if you're looking at current year, the way, the way the software works in almost every town in Vermont uses a company called Memric. And it's pretty clunky, but it's, so something's hap- so, oh, I cut you off here. Dad Boom said just message me. So the link's not working in Wizard Burrows, I think, or Barrows is waiting in the waiting room too. I'm a little bit, the camera's acting real clunky.
It's, it's-
Yeah, it's actually, I can see it moving.
But I can't, well, I can't see it physically moving, but I'm not even touching it.
Should we go out and go back in like we did a couple of weeks ago? Because that's-
And ask, ask them what the last three letters are in the link. But, I mean, there should be a waiting room.
Now it's stable. But it was a person bouncing.
You see, in the corner?
The little people?
The one is us.
Okay.
Yeah, so sometimes. But click on the three, three dot things.
I hadn't even touched it. It's just jumping.
Alright, well, why don't, why don't we pause the meeting at, we'll say, 6:44. Log out and log back in.
The battery, it wasn't the batteries.
We're gonna resume the meeting at 6:53.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Would you mind moving the camera over to the right just a little bit? We can really see only you, Tom, and the door.
Oh, yeah.
It was kinda, there was a gremlin in it earlier, and it was jumping all around the room. It was really quite an adventure we just had.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
Okay, so that's where, where last we let off, my, my final point on this was if you look at where you get to, I know they won't have it on this, on your budget one, they'll talk about outside revenue. And between our contracts for like police services and our ambulance business, we have a pretty good percentage that's outside revenue. And that's good because it helps pay for a lot of the stuff in the budget. But it's bad if it doesn't go up in the same percentage as expenses. The, the tax portion has to cover that gap. So let's, let's just say if our, if our spending went up 5% and our outside income went down a percent, a tax increase may be required of 6% or 7% to cover the gap. So it's good to have it. But if you don't have outside income, it's, there's a more direct correlation between spending and taxation.
And point of clarity, this is where we are to date from the current budget-
Right.
-that we enacted and launched.
Correct.
Okay. Casey weren't following that.
Yeah.
In the initial, that could compete. So it looks like we're pretty much on target.
Uh, no.
No?
No, there's a number of things in here. The first thing that screws everything up is that first line, real taxes. It essentially reflects everything being collected already. So we've only had, you know, one, we're only halfway through the tax collection, but the way the software works, and you can't undo it, is that soon as it's booked, when we send out the tax bills, it gets booked as, as revenue.
Oh, so that 44th, 36th, 269 is not actually-
No, we have about, we have about 2.3 million in.
Okay.
And the, the other side that, no, and we have different things that we, we track internally month to month is cash flow is important. So if you look at the very last page, it'll say total all funds, and it's about 1.9 million. So our, our spending to date since this was done, this is, what was that one that said? Total, oh, okay. Total expenditures, $3.683 million, okay? So we have spent 55% of our expenditures halfway through the year. That sort of sounds okay, except that's just dumb luck. For example, we pay probably 80% of our bond debt in November. So the first half of the year is very much front-loaded, and all of the expenses for November aren't recorded in here. So by the time we close out month six, we'll probably be more at 62 or 63. The shorthand version is we've collected about 2.3 million, and we, so we are about a million dollars behind in revenue versus expenses. And we have very little working capital. So that creates cash flow challenges this time every year. And in addition to that, it's something that doesn't get reflected here. Our payments to the schools that are required to be made, whether we collect the taxes or not, went from about $830,000 a quarter last year to $1.1 million a quarter. So whether we collect the money or not, we've had to make two of those payments already. So again, stresses cash flow. That's the two sides we look at. Are we collecting what we said we thought we would? Are we spending what we thought we would? And can we actually meet our obligations on a month-to-month basis? The good news is we do have, you know, in the neighborhood of 1.2 million in reserve accounts and capital accounts that we use for borrowing back and forth to cover our cash flow. We also have a bond anticipation note that we can borrow in anticipation of collecting taxes, and we use that as well. So we get by, but it's a struggle.
Would it be easier if we went back to quarterly rather than semi-annual? Does that affect the cash flow?
It improves the cash flow. Well, the reason it improves the cash flow, what we did is, you know, theoretically, if we get half the money in September, instead of a quarter of the money in September, things are better. So we, we went from four to two, but we provided this 60-day grace period with no interest. So if making half of that payment at one time was a struggle, people can still make four payments if they want to without suffering any penalties or interest. But what, but by changing it, we get all of our escrow taxes on the due date. So that's a pretty good chunk of money. So that used to come four times a year. Now we get half of that in September and the other half in February. So that's helped our- Big picture things that you'll hear about later on. You may have read about healthcare. Our healthcare went up 22 and a half percent. That's a little over $100,000 to maintain what we're doing. Pension expenses, workers' comp, those kind of things are all significant increases in the budget. The other part is we, we went through some pretty aggressive payroll increases last year when we opened contracts and renegotiated things. On the positive side, it has done, for the most part, what we expected it to do. Most municipalities in Vermont and New Hampshire have sometimes debilitating shortages of staff, some just inconvenience shortages of staff. We are not fully staffed, but we are pretty close. And we'll get into more on that during the budget season. But as I bring up, every year, if you're, say, a little bit bigger town like Springfield, and in the police department, they have 18 or 20 officers. They have a bigger territory to cover, and they have multiple officers on every shift. And if they're down two or three officers, they still have coverage. We have 10 officers, which is the bare minimum you need to have two people on 24/7, which is the service that the community has asked us to provide. So if we go from 10 to nine, that means everybody else is working overtime, the same thing, covering vacations and sick days and things like that. Same thing with our highway. We only have four. When we go to three, it's like saying we lost 25% of our workforce. We don't say, well, we just won't plow some of the roads. We certainly do have busy times and downtimes in that department, but with only four, the busy times get pretty busy, and we do some, we have cross-trained other employees that know how to drive some of the trucks and things like that, or the sidewalk snowplow. So that's the, we, we have a lot of big city services, but we don't have a lot of big city people. What are you expecting? What is your envision? What are you envisioning for this budget to come in increase-wise? You know, the, the easy answer is just saying you want the same as you had before. This is what we can do, the same as you had before. And we'll do the same thing we did last year and just incorporate all of the outside influences that have changed the budget, like healthcare and things like that. The budget will go up 15%. What makes this a challenge this year is last year, we were facing those same challenges, percentages like that, with the specter of, you know, soon as the new year started, all the school tax rate news was out there, and it sounded like it was gonna be a pretty ugly year, and it was a pretty ugly year. So we were really scrambling, and we've had a pretty good relationship with the school administration to try to, you know, work with each other to understand what the full impact is on the community. Part of what we did last year is not contribute anything to our capital fund and our, our reserve fund. Reserve is like the rainy day fund. It's not designated for anything. The capital fund is, you know, trucks, not, not like big construction, like road construction, but expensive equipment. So you can do that here and there, but like we say, when we cut it out, that means you're starting in a hole for the next year. So we have, I think it's around $220,000 that is in the budget and part of that 15% increase that is related to just getting back to where we were prior to cutting that out. So does that mean that's where we're gonna be? I don't think so. I try not to be cavalier with the numbers, but it is a budget. It's not an exact. There's always things that happen, and every year, same kind of conversation. The closer you cut to the bone, the higher the likelihood that multiple things are gonna go wrong. So we can always weather things going wrong. It helps when you have a reserve fund that's healthy so that you have something to fall back on if something really bad happens. And 500,000 is probably a third of what it should be, but not funding it is, is a bad, it's a bad strategy, so.
So it's pretty safe to say that this year, doing something like cutting from any of those two funds, not?
Well, you can't, well, zero funding in two years in a row. It's, it's a bad trend. I guess, I guess the other overreaching part that I've had this discussion with the Select Board, the line items that are like uniforms, or gas, or repairs on vehicles, things like that, there is not enough money that could be saved in there to make a meaningful difference in the budget. You can, you can save some, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna say, well, I wouldn't, I don't want a tax increase this year. To make meaningful changes means meaningful, long-term changes to service. It means not having 24/7 police coverage. It means accepting the fact that we have contracts where we commit to other towns, both on ambulance services and police services, and saying, but we're only gonna have one person on or no people on. That has an impact. And you can't say, let's cut two or three firemen or officers for a year and then bring them all back another year. That doesn't happen. So it, does it mean it never happens? You know, as, you know, I like to, I like to point out, because it helps deflect some of the blame from me, is we, we're the last line of defense for every government service that's out there. The state police, God knows how many years ago, said, we're not staffing after 2 o'clock in the morning. So they made that decision. We don't, the state police is not out on the road after 2 o'clock in the morning. Call comes in, it means somebody's on call. They get up, they get dressed, they go out, and they go. And it obviously greatly extends the response time. But the state made that decision. Every municipality in the state feels that. And there's lots of towns that choose not to have any police service. So that's, that's for sure. We often point out that Heartland and Weathersfield have the same populations. I don't think anybody thinks they are by any means the same profile of communities that we're spending a million dollars on police and other towns our size aren't. But when there isn't a state police, then we could say, you know what, we'll just not have them on at night. We, we can rely on the surrounding town because nobody around us has police. And no, no disrespect to the sheriff's office, but you cover a pretty big territory with a pretty thin staff as well. So you're looking at the difference between a local response time, like within minutes, to within hours. The same thing with, with ambulance. We'll, we'll get into it about, you know, how much money we make on ambulance and providing the services, and we could get out of that business. But then that would mean, depending on other services to be here, you look at the makeup of our population, does it matter if it takes 45 minutes for an ambulance to get there instead of four minutes for an ambulance to get there? My, my whole point is, every single decision is possible. And you can have examples of every other, many other towns having similar populations that have already made decisions not to have as robust a service package as we have here. But it comes with a cost. And emergency services are those things, you don't need them until you do, and when you need them, you need them. So gotta be careful. There, there's other things like our rec department has been booming. Lot of people really like it. There's other towns that don't have anything close to what we have. We have great facilities that are a result of, you know, decades of good decisions to have what we have here. But then, you know, every year, there's somebody who goes, why, you know, why do we have it? Or why, that whole argument of why isn't everything pay-to-play versus why isn't everything free? And there's reasons for all of that. But, you know, that, that's a quality of life decision that is big. So I say every year, if you wanna come and ask if I'm buying pencils at the right price, or if we could buy, you know, cheaper cars, we have contract, big, big affiliations with everything that buys big equipment, like state bid practices. Our fuel is bought through a statewide consortium. We get good prices on everything that we buy. Could we buy a few less pencils? Maybe, but kinda that all gets down to you're paying me a not insignificant sum to make sure that we're doing that. So if you think that's where the money is, you should save money by letting me go because I'm not doing my job. I, as I always say, it's the Select Board's vision. Budget Committee helps with the Select Board to set the vision what the community wants, and it's my job to give you good value on that money. So far, I think it's been good, and the community's been very supportive of our budgets.
So with third, being my third year, I feel like it, it always comes down to people that want the services or they don't, and we tend to want them. So, I mean, even with last year's budget went up, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it wasn't as bad as I was saying. I hate to say that out loud, but it wasn't. It seems to be like where we take the big hits with school. And so, you know, going back to the town, we have a cockpit close out to Brownsville, and such, that we have the Brownsville School out there. And, you know, we do, even going to the rec program, I mean, and now Heartland has rec programs, Weathersfield, et cetera. So is there a way to, like, bring in more from West Wind or Brownsville? Did their taxes go up much? What do we get from them to, for all these services? And then as far as the school goes, that seems to be where we get the big hit. I mean, at the Brownsville School, unless it's school budget thing, but we have how many teachers out there and how many students? And I, I just think we need to rethink, I don't know, that's just, but we either want services or we don't. So where can we bring in more money from?
The school, the school thing, as much as I agree with you on that, it's just not, here's not the discussion for that. I mean, we can say we don't agree with that.
No, I know, but I'm just saying it does tie into the budget altogether. When you think of like, so we don't wanna pull necessarily the town budget. We're, make cuts there. The town needs to be involved with it all and look at it all. I'm just, it's bigger than just the town.
We don't sway the school budget.
No, I know you don't. I'm not trying to start anything.
No, no, no. You talk about like our contract services though with other towns. Like, I think the police contract we have serving West Windsor is, I think, very, it's beneficial for everybody, but that's a very good thing for the town Windsor. I think that that helps us. I think it's, I think it's a good thing for us as the town. And so I don't think that those, like, 120 grand, 110 grand a year or something. So you, you cut that and really-
Can it go up? I'm not saying cut that, but I'm saying what does Brownsville pay? Like, would they save us?
Their, my opinion on it, for somebody who does- no, my opinion from somebody that does contractual law enforcement, the contract that we have in, with Brownsville from the town of Windsor, that's a benefit to us. And I think from a cost standpoint, I think we're, I think we're doing okay with that is, without getting in the middle of contract negotiations, but I think we're doing okay with it. Also, we signed a three-year contract with them, right?
But it's up in a year.
Right. I mean, we could get out, but I think that we're doing our right with that one. You agree?
Yeah, I would say-
We gained police services with this also. We gained police services with the contract.
The, I mean, the, the way, the way we approach a number of contracts- the way we approach a number of contracts, and to speak specifically to how we work with West Windsor and the school budget and town budget. The only thing I would, I would put with that is we are split pretty much 50/50 town and school. If there are people that are interested in a, in a meaningful reduction in the tax burden, they have to go to both school and the town because neither side can change your tax bill enough to do. It's way more complicated with the school and I, I don't know who's responsible for it. But since the blow up that happened last year, there's a number of pretty good resources that explain how school funding works. Because like the school board sets what they, they're going to spend, but the state sets what the tax rate is. And I don't think I'm off by a lot, but I thought the school budget was up six or seven percent with tax rate, well, 19%. So you, the school board didn't set the tax rate. The legislature set the tax rate. Nobody understands how it's done. So that, that's a different discussion for another day, but at 50/50, you can't expect just the municipal or just the school system to change your taxes. When it comes to contracts, we, we really approach it from, we'll say marginal revenue, marginal cost, not a straight up cost per service that are, and the easiest one to explain is we get a little over 200,000 a year from West Windsor for sewer service. Their, their pipe is connected to our plant. It costs us very little to process what they're doing on a marginal cost basis. The plant is there, the personnel are there, everything is there. They put more flow through and there's some cost of treatment. They have to look at it and they do from a, well, if we didn't pay Windsor that, we'd have to build our own plant. So it's a mutually beneficial thing. If they walked away and built their own plant, they would get buried in debt and we would lose a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to go towards a million something operating. Rec department, anything, they all have out of town fees that are higher than in-town fees. The town over there helps pay some of that difference. Our ambulance contracts are, you know, the same way. We are the designated ambulance service for a number of towns around. And we make money two ways. We make money as being designated. The different towns pay us a sum of money that you can see in the contract line item, but then we also make money on the calls. And then we make the decision whether or not it's worthwhile to put in the, the time, money and personnel to make the calls. Always keeping in mind that we will never put the Windsor community at risk by not having somebody here to make an immediate 911 response to communities that surround us. So roughly speaking, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars on this, on the sewer budget. We have $50,000 with SRO officers that, that service the school system in Heartland. We have 120,000 police budget. We get 700 and some odd thousand net ambulance revenue in. So we have a fair amount of that. I think the way that, I would say 10 years from today, there's going to be a variety of regional services that are just going to be, because of necessity. People can't get the bodies. People can't afford the equipment. Well, whether that's emergency services or right now, we're sharing a land use people with two other towns. And then it's going to expand to four other towns shortly because people can't get them. So. It depends on, I guess what the objective is. Like with the land use, there used to be somebody in the office three or four days a week. He could stop in and say hello. Now there's somebody in the office two days a month. Technology has bridged that gap. We have, you know, video contracting back and forth. We can email permits and all, all of the towns are now in the process. We've all signed onto a contract to provide standardized, at your phone. But there'll be a standardized platform to make people who need a permit to let out easier and the people having to review the permit, do it easier. So there, there are, there are steps that are improving the efficiency of the process, but it is getting less personal. And I think that would be the same thing. You know, just think of the difference if your car broke down on the side of the road on, on Main Street here and a Windsor cop stopped and you knew them, or at least they were familiar with the area versus having a state cop stop. No disrespect to the state cop, but they're not going to be as familiar with the community and things like that.
Also with the contracted services, we're essentially, we're, we're going to have those services anyways and again, like the police contract, we're, we're, we're at the same staffing level we would have had and West Windsor's fairly minimal as far as the call volume and even time out there. Windsor and West Windsor, the size of most of the towns around us anyway, so I don't think we're losing. I think we're gaining. And I think all of our, we're, we're getting a little extra for services we already would have provided with a very minimal negative impact on the town.
All of them, we would be in a worse financial position without the contracts. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a break even, we'll say. We lose a contract, we lose the cost. It's not like that. We'd lose the money. It would be difficult to, to find a correspondent cost equal to that. The cost of remain would be higher. The good news, if anyone's asking, our rec department, more programs, more kids, diversity of age groups that come in. The, the number of comments about people being surprised how many kids are in there after school, that, that accessibility and kind of just the luck that we're so close to the school, the kids walk from school, they're over here doing healthy activities to the groups that use the meeting rooms during the day. And we either don't charge anything or charge minimal fees because we figure we're, we're doing part of, part of the community. The, I'm not going to blow the horns of all these other departments, but both of our chiefs are statewide and regionally recognized. Jen just got written up for.
Yeah, so I told the chair this, but Chief Frank was just, so New England Chiefs of Police just had their conference down in Massachusetts last month. And Jen was nominated to the board of directors for the New England Chiefs of Police Association and first female on the board in the 98 year history. So that was kind of a cool thing.
And, and in her case, we, we get a lot of concerns about addiction issues in town and seemingly no response to illegal behavior. And there are a lot of constraints that our police and every police force has on how you handle with that. Jen has been a very engaged voice at the state level with legislation to try to move the ball, to bring more accountability and more resources to that. So that's kind of been her policy. That's been an interest that goes beyond us being the police chief here. Kevin, his, the fire chief has always been, you know, very engaged in the emergency management. He was the emergency management director of the year. Is involved with the, the Fire Chiefs Association. So we're not getting average people for high salaries. We are getting highly skilled people for competitive salaries. And I, I was told a long time ago by an auditor that I had, kind of referring to my cavalier attitude towards estimating instead of getting the numbers exactly right. And she said, Tom, you know, it's the tone at the top. You set that tone and the people will follow that. That was to tell me to get more serious about having the numbers match. But I see that with the department heads and the accountability that they have with their staff and the work ethic and things like that.
Cliff Mas? Bring us back on some of the things I harped on. Was the fact that, and, and we're still in the same place, but I, I'm seeing improvements that the, the only solution because expenses are going to continue to go up faster than people's revenue, individual revenue is going to go up. That's a national problem. Windsor can't fix that. What Windsor can do, and I see that we're, we've made some positive steps. In fact, even the first part of the meeting was part of that, is to improve the properties in town, grow the tax base, take advantage of the new state zoning, Act 250 changes and things that allow some infill and be able to take the downtown area and create some more productive taxable spaces there too. And I think that's unfortunately for the budget, you have only two choices if you want to pay less in taxes. You know, cut services, increase revenues. Then it's just a very simple math equation in the end. And I'm glad to see that we're, we are doing some things that can increase revenue. I mean, that's going to be a slow thing, but it's going to be that long-term. 10 years from now, that will have made a massive difference if we can progress and keep doing that every year.
This will be 19 years that I've been doing this. And the first six will say, you could count on a 2% to 3% grant list growth just from new development in a community. 2010 to 2020, everything was flat. I mean, nobody saw new houses getting built around here. Vermont has its own layer of complexity to get new things built. But if you could grow your grant list 2% a year and your expenses grew three, you're looking at a 1% tax increase. Like generally palatable, like under 3%. It wasn't the, the impact of the revaluation certainly increased the existing values by whatever that was, 50%. I would argue that's a good thing. That's your biggest asset. You want that to be worth more. It says that the, the community is desirable, maybe to a little bit higher degree than some other communities around. That's a good thing. As we've gone through, all things being equal, it shouldn't have increased your tax rate, but obviously every house is a little bit different. But we have seen investment. Aside from the, the new apartment building, you know, Cliff, if you've been involved in, there's a number of developments that are going on that are taking existing structures and improving them significantly, like millions of dollars of investment. And that's grant list growth. And there have been houses that have been built and things seem to be loosening up a little bit in that regard. So up until the revale, our grant list was 250 million. Now it's about 380 million. But 380 million, please correct me when my math is wrong, but 3.8 million is 1%. So these days you don't have to build that many houses to get 3.8 million in value. So if you've got eight houses built in a year, you may get a one and a half percent increase in grant list. That helps a little bit. And if we can stabilize what's going on nationally, if somebody can stabilize what's going on nationally, so you can get back to some realistic numbers, we could be okay. The, the underlying issue in, in, there are more people right now that want to buy houses than there are any houses. So it's not how much is your house worth? It's how much is somebody willing to pay? And I won't go through all of the maths, but there seems to be about 100,000 more jobs in Vermont than there are people of working age to fill them. There's a lot of old people working to cover that. So it's not a matter of, is that a fair wage for what you're going to do? It's I really need somebody. And you know how to do it. How much do I have to pay or what kind of work environment do I have to offer to get you to provide this service to me? And when there's not enough bodies, you know, we, we focus a lot here on loyalty and loyalty that's earned by having a good work environment, a fair compensation package. But it's, I don't know how that's going to change in the short term.
Is it appropriate to ask if there's any news on the prison company?
It's not inappropriate to ask, but there is no news.
And it seems even when there is news, it's not really news. So it seems to just be this cyclical thing.
What's, what is the next, where are we looking at?
Nothing. I mean, I, I'm speaking up, but I think that you'll see. So at the end of the day, really the legislature has to make a decision what they're going to do with it, right, Tom? Am I wrong?
Sort of. Well, no, the, there's a lot of opportunity there, we'll say. People don't have pay, like, there is no shared vision between people who are directly impacted, like residents of Windsor, people who own it, like the state of Vermont. So without that vision, what I've seen since it's been closed since 2017 is knee jerk reactions to things, like when they closed it. It wasn't a long-term thing. It's the cost too much to run the prison or having budget problems. We're closing prison on October 31st. Then it's, we need a youth detention center. Not that would be the best place for a youth detention center. We need, so it's and there have been so many studies that answer a lot of the questions about could it be this, could it be that, could it be the other thing? But without somebody really driving the bus on, on a use that can beneficial to all. And I think everybody in Windsor understands, you have to be able to make the case to the legislature that every Vermonter needs to benefit from whatever decision they make. And if that is income tax, because it's going to be full of, you know, millionaires and they're all going to pay $20 million in, in property taxes, everybody gets the benefit from that. But there just hasn't been that vision.
So it's sitting in the legis, it's the legislate, it would be the legislature that would drive the bus?
Right. Well, potentially, or DOC, there's a lot, DOC owned, kind of owns it. BGS owns it. They could say, hey, we need to do something here. There would be a lot of moving parts, but I think for whatever, and tons of them is a lot longer, but I think you will not see any movement with that for a year or two unless something comes down.
It ended the last session with, no, we're not going to do anything. I, I will say, since it closed, the state has always done a good job reaching out to the community. What do you think about this, that or the other thing? There's been hiccups along the way, but it's pretty clear what the community would tolerate and not. And I'm, I'm happy that they've taken that into account. I know it's made their decision harder. And I can understand the difficulty in taking a piece of property that has the assets that it does and instead giving it away. They've done all kinds of studies. It says you can't sell it because it's not worth anything, you know, all that kind of stuff. So.
I was pretty confident. No, I felt good about the last move that I saw they make, actually saying, okay, let's look at the parcel and break it into three sections and then maybe focus on sections and start doing a little bit of development or make some maneuvers with that too. And I actually felt a little bit hopeful about that. A little money invested in it, a thought, a lot of communication, conversation and that, that business too. So that definitely, um,
That wasn't.
That hurt. That hurt.
Yeah, no, that, that was a study.
That was a study paid by the state saying, let's do something. And then we had all these meetings and all, everything else and we're done. I'm like, kidding me. I was hopeful.
I think we're getting a little off track now that I'm the chair, but it's, it's not, it's a, it's basically a police training facility for the state police and they, and so it's being used enough. And I think, I just don't think for whatever that you'll see a ton of movement on that, especially with all the other stuff that all these agencies need to focus on the next budget year or two. I think we're just kind of going to be status quo, which has been what, for 10 years now?
Almost. It is a new legislature. There's a lot of new faces. Maybe there's some new direction and kind of going back to the grand list growth thing. It would take nothing to build $50 million worth of stuff out there. That's about a, what, 12, 13% increase in our, in our grand list? That would equate to a similar increase in tax revenue, half of which the state would get towards their education. So there, there, there is a model, but I have a certain disposition that doesn't matter because I don't get to make those decisions. But if we're talking about, we want it because we want to make money. And the other, another interest is we want to make sure it provides a, a social benefit, whether you want to say it's wanting to be recreation, addiction facilities, low income housing. Like there are all these different missions that have not lined up. So the financial pressures, we say every year it costs a quarter of a million dollars or so to keep it open, uh, keep it closed. But I think that lack of vision and what, what the end goal is, is the problem.
What I see is that a serious developer hasn't come in polls yet. And I think that would move the ball. If they come in line with what the type of uses, like the Paul was talking about the last study, the reason they did that is kind of like trial balloon. Is there anybody willing to jump in on this deal and say, yeah, I'm a major developer out of Nebraska. I'd like to come in here and do that. But the problem also at that time is Act 250 was still raging. And if basically Act 250 doesn't want any development, developers are going to lose so much money just trying to put a proposal together that if they're turned down, they're still not ready to reward.
There have been very well-funded, big developers that have looked at that.
And looking at an environment where the state and city and everybody's friendly to them too, and they don't meet the aggravation.
Yeah. There's, I'll say every, in every instance that's happened, and I can think of three. Every, I'll say every, in every instance that's happened, and I can think of three. State agencies that were appropriate were involved. We had a seat at the table. Everybody was upfront with what their goals and objectives were, and nobody was willing to put any money in it.
Right. That was the problem.
So moving forward, is there any other discussions for the budget?
I'll work Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, everything. You get all this information together so that you can have it for the beginning of the year.
Great. So we're going to move on to an action item to consider the approval of errors and omissions from the assessor's office.
Okay. There's our democracy in action. We have a errors and omissions form. These are just inaccuracies that have been picked up by the assessor's office. All of them resulting from errors on the revale and parcel aligning. It's like this piece of land should have gone with this one instead of that one. This has to be voted on by the select board, just so that it can be logged with the current grant list and the values will be reflected. So they're all, they're all legitimate and none of them will have an impact, you know, on the budget. So I would encourage you to consider approval of the errors and omissions certificate.
Make a motion to approve it.
All right.
I will second the motion to approve that.
Excellent. Do we have any discussion? All right. So Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 And that passes.
There's a signature page in the green folder.
The next order of business is another action item to consider the approval of TA 60 V Trans financial report.
This is a annual kind of boilerplate report required by V Trans. Towns are mandated to spend, it's a very, I forget what it is, very minimal amount of money, like $150,000 a year on road maintenance. And if you don't, then you're not eligible for grants. So we have to put together a statement that says we spend this much on roads. This says that we, uh, we'll spend about a million one on roads. So I just ask that you vote to approve the TA 60 and I will get that off to V Trans and we continue to stay eligible for the grant.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the TA 60.
I will second that motion.
Do we have any discussion? All right, Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Perfect. That passes. We have another action item to consider the adoption of an ethics ordinance as required by Act 170.
Right. So this came out of the last legislative session. There was a lot of hullabaloo, back and forth. VLCT was involved. The long and short of it is, this was passed. And it's been on the radar that you got to do something. I got some guidance on December 10th, that you have to do some certain things. We knew that the, uh, the data became effective as January 1st. So VLCT had a template for a code of ethics that it meets all the requirements of the state. Now, I'll say right up front, there's been no discussion about this. I'm going to ask you to vote to approve it. It checks the box. There's mandatory training that's not available yet, but it's coming down the pike. So this is just being stood up. So this helps us stay in compliance with what the law is. It's all been reviewed. There's, you can agree or disagree with it, but it, it meets the requirements of the law. So I'd ask you to consider adopting the Town of Windsor Code of Ethics as presented. And then we will follow through with all of the posting requirements and such.
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion.
Do we have any discussion?
Town attorney approved it or it came through VLCT?
VLCT attorney approved it, so.
It looked pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'll just say it, we have had a conflict of interest policy that is the closest thing that comes to that. That's not being rescinded, but this, then it sets up a lot of processes for filing complaints.
I'm sure, so we're going to talk about the ethics liaison. Is that in, I, I looked at policy order earlier. I don't remember. The computer's not doing well.
Getting, getting to that, I'm going to suggest that you, you appoint the town clerk as the liaison, the assistant town clerk.
All right, Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Aye.
So that passes as well. Now we have a discussion item to appoint an ethics liaison to communicate with the state ethics. And it sounds like the town clerk might be.
Say the assistant town clerk?
Yeah.
Another requirement. I saw another town, I think Bethel was going to put the town manager, um, and a little bit smaller. Is that just Riley's good fit for her? She's in, she talks to Secretary of State, does all that. That's.
Yeah, again, maybe the interpretation of this isn't quite right. In, in the ordinance, the town manager is listed as the person that handles, that's who you come to with a complaint, all that kind of stuff. And that is, is I have the access to the most resources. There's provisions in there. If somebody files a complaint against me, then there's a backup plan for that. We're, we're approaching this, that the town clerk is the point of contact with a lot of state agencies, gets contact, you know, copied on grant applications or grant decisions and things like that, that it's just a communications liaison. If that turns out not to be the case, we can change it. But it's not the intent that if somebody says, somebody on the planning commission is doing evil things, that Riley is the one that instigates the investigation and follows it through. She would port that to me and I would do what needed to do. Okay. So a motion to appoint our assistant town clerk Riley White as the ethics liaison.
I will make that motion.
I will second the motion.
Do we have any more discussion?
No, other than I think Riley's, she does a great job with the campaign stuff and dealing with the Secretary of State and everything else that she does. I think it's a good, will be a good fit.
So Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Aye.
Welcome Riley. And now we're going to move on to old business with liaison reports.
Paul Woodman and my liaison with Wick, they have, um, they had a photo contest with about 90 entries. And the public took the winners and that was via Facebook. So they had a pretty good, um, pretty good showing. A lot of people participated with it. Wick also purchased a bunch of lights, some of the businesses to help light up the town a little bit more, which definitely looks nice when you go into town. So kudos to them about that. And, um, you know, and obviously there's a little bit of talk that's churning right now about, um, looking at the property next to our main street, uh, main street development scene, if something like that will, will be launching. So that would be again, falling in the whale house over selling. So preliminary, but they're working on that. So that's my liaison report. Thank you.
So I'm the liaison for the planning commission and we had a meeting on the 12th. There's a gentleman by the name of Harry Falconer, and he moved to Windsor from Woodstock. And he actually has, uh, some, some experience with bylaws and zoning and he helped Woodstock. And it sounds like he wants to help Windsor as well. So they are looking to add him to the planning commission. Uh, there's two grants open right now. One's for transportation, one's for municipality. I want to say they're going to try to apply for at least one, if not both of those, both of those. And they are still going over the town plan and trying to help with updating the parts that they can update.
That's what he had, he had helped write the town plan, Woodstock.
Yep.
That's why he's, could be a significant asset for us to join our, the planning commission.
I was excited to hear about him. And that's what I've got for my liaison before.
Thank you.
Now we have legislative discussions.
So I put that on the agenda and talked with Jeffrey about it just to be a continuation of the prior discussions. I know Jeffrey and Paul met with Joe Major.
Monday.
Okay, Monday. And Elizabeth is, uh, joining us. And I believe that there was some thought about blighted buildings and, and legislation that Elizabeth wanted to talk about. Is that correct?
That's right. I have a couple of things. I'm, I'm really seeking your input on these. I've been thinking a lot about Windsor and, uh, the absentee landlords who, uh, or, um, what do you call, uh, private equity owners who reside out of state and have become delinquent landlords? And, uh, uh, and some of the kind of, I hesitate to use the word blight, but, um, some of the buildings that are owned by people or entities who pay their taxes, but the buildings are, um, delinquent buildings. And so I'm considering a bill. I, I'm, I'm approaching, as you know, um, last biennium, I served on the general and housing committee. And I'm considering a bill that is basically a using what we do have bill. And so, uh, one piece of the bill would be, um, to support somehow, um, the, uh, kind of wave started by, uh, Vermont Home Share, which is, if you're not familiar with it, it's an entity which links up. Cause one of the things that we do have is while we have, um, a very, very low inventory of, um, housing for sale and also rentals. Our state also has a really high inventory of unused housing. And, uh, and included in that is, um, housing that, uh, or they, they, they lump into that category, housing that, um, is really big, but occupied by one person or a couple of people. And Home Share Vermont, um, links up older Vermonters with younger people who, um, could reside in their homes. So it's sort of like a, it's a home share, but, uh, they screen, the Home Share Vermont screens on both sides for safety and for personalities and things like that. And they've been, for wedding, redding West Windsor Aging in Place, um, where I'm, I'm a member of that organization. It's been really wildly successful in our area. They're, they're based in Woodstock. They just came in, I think in March and, uh, they, cause it, it helps, uh, older Vermonters remain in their homes if they want to by having a presence there. And, uh, the, the renters are also able to do like really small things. My mom is very concerned about having the sticks in her yard picked up. That is like her number one complaint. And I've heard that many times from older, older people in our area, they're like getting the sticks picked up out of the yard and having, if, if you need somebody to live in your house so that you can get your sticks picked up, then Home Share Vermont is for you. But it, it's actually, um, uh, I think a really great and innovative program. And so one piece of my bill would be to support Home Share Vermont. Another piece would be to rein in, um, uh, corporate and, and private equity ownership that resides in state. And, uh, uh, because I know about several of the buildings downtown, the, the commercial buildings downtown that are owned by one, one, uh, private equity owner. And, uh, we see this a lot all across our state. And to, uh, not adhere to the responsibilities of community, um, I think is, uh, really hindering a lot of towns. So I wondered what you thought about that? Do you think it's a good idea?
We're at Burrows, it's Ryan. Real quick question. So private equity might mean something different to a lot of people. Are you talking about Blackrock type folks? Are you talking about like?
Yeah.
A slumlord, I mean, that owns a couple of houses that isn't taking care of them? Or are you kind of being overarching?
Both.
Find your private equity. I think people like Tom, you know, billions of dollars.
Don't come after me. Yeah.
I'm, I'm talking about both. I'm, I'm talking about, I'm, I'm even talking about the, the lady that I stayed with last year up in Montpelier, lived in a building where nobody in the building, everybody in the building had lived there for at least, at a minimum 15 years. Nobody in the building has a lease. And the owner is a Russian nationalist who lives in, a Russian national who lives in Spain. And he only comes to Vermont one week out of the year. And, uh, uh, it puts all of the people in that, for two years, um, there wasn't, there was not a fully functioning toilet in the apartment that I stayed in. It got fixed the week before the end. Man, that doesn't matter, but it puts all of the people in the building at risk because they can't, um, ask for upgrades. They can't, uh, because the landlord isn't there to do proper maintenance. Proper maintenance isn't required. And so people are living in, in conditions that they wouldn't have to live in if they had a lease. But in Vermont, we don't require leases. So it's that, it's partly landlords who own a bunch of properties and live out of state. It is.
Why the out of state stipulation?
What's that?
All, all, why the out of state stipulation? Like all of our dilapidated properties are owned by Vermont residents.
Well, that's the other, I, that's the other part of the bill is, um, is, uh, delinquent property owners in general. And, um, I'll, I'll get to that in, in a second. But I, but I think that, um, having, uh, uh, equity firms or corporations come in and buy up, they now own about 40% of the, uh, uh, available rentals in the state of Vermont. And, uh, that's, that's all property that's owned by out of staters.
Elizabeth, when we talk about like, again, when I, when I hear private equity, like Blackrock, for example, has made a huge push in the, um.
Medicine.
Landlord world, right?
Oh, yeah.
But what, so I guess what, what is the point of the bill? For me, like if you're saying, hey, we're looking at maybe holding landlords a little bit more accountable, like I'm all for that. But somebody whose statutory function is, you know, the whole eviction process, I think we have, I have some real concerns on how we hold tenants accountable also, because that seems to be such a cumbersome process. There are, I think it's a little more nuanced than we have just slumlords in Vermont, which we certain, and I think like to Tom's point, we certainly have those, but to me, it seems like it's almost more of a, of the mom and pop thing is, at least from what I've seen in Windsor, maybe mom and pop's not the right term, but.
That, I mean, I, I appreciate an effort that gives a tool to motivate somebody, whatever that motivation is, to, uh, pay more attention to the property. But the ownership structure or the location of the owner, to me, seems irrelevant. Like if I, if I had five rental properties, I would incorporate my business into Tom's rental company incorporated. So I would be a corporate entity or a private equity entity because I don't want to personally own that. That's just the model that you use. And where I live, like I said, I'm sure big businesses or big buildings in bigger cities have bigger entities that own them. And I'm sure there's many examples that you cite, like somebody who lives out of the country. But, uh, we have essentially landlords who use federal housing funding that doesn't have any oversight to make a living, putting no money into their local properties and their Vermont residents. So I would say any landlord, wherever they live or whatever their corporate structure that doesn't, um, maintain, which can be a pretty wide berth of what you would describe that as, but they bring down the quality of life and the property values of everything around them. And it doesn't matter where the owner lives or what their corporate structure is.
Right. Okay. Well, let me back up then. What I'm trying to get at is helping to improve Windsor and some of the delinquent property owners, um, in Windsor. So a third, a third piece of the bill I'm proposing, which hasn't been drafted yet. So that's why I'm coming to you first for input is, uh, So that's why I'm coming to you first for input, is people who inherit property, pay the taxes on the property, but let the property go fallow and are are delinquent owners. And I know there are in my legislative district, there are several such properties, not just in Windsor, but also in West Windsor and Heartland. And I'm thinking about trying to encourage those owners to sell their property or at least be required to do some maintenance on the property, occupy the property and not not just sit on it and let it go fallow.
And again, it's Ryan running my mouth, if you could imagine, which I know sounds hard to believe everybody in the room that knows me. I guess the real I start getting some hang up and I really, really appreciate where you're going. You're like your thought process. I just think it's so that whole landlord tenant, how do we make them maintain? I think if you look into just the idea of like, hey, we have certain levels, like standards that you might hold the landlord accountable, whether we maybe get some funding to Vermont Fire Safety or these type of things, or you go, hey, that's more accountable. I appreciate where you're going with it. It just seems like, one, I don't think you're going to get a ton of traction in the legislature with it. And also, if somebody wants to buy a home and let it fall into the ground, it's you start to get into, well, maybe that's their right. And I know that's not a great thing, but where do you get into you're overstepping somebody's individual right? If they if they inherit a home and want it to go to hell, you know, I guess, you know, I think it just gets very complex.
Yeah, I mean, the a derelict property looks the same from the outside regardless of who owns it. And I know private just today, we have a a very rundown property in town that is exactly somebody inherited it, went in the family, hasn't been maintained. Big hole in the roof, overgrown yard, rats in the yard, the neighbors are complaining. And the court's position is that it's their property and it's theirs to do as they see fit. So there's health concerns, financial concerns.
Safety.
It's safety because the houses are very close together. And we spend a fair amount of money taking these cases to court, using the ordinances that we currently have on the books that have been gone through the test of our town attorneys that say, yes, they comply with Vermont law, but the courts do not support the municipality's ability to take action. Now, that's owner occupied. But when it comes to rental properties, again, your idea would work great if you just get rid of the corporate and out of state things because that doesn't do anything to help Windsor because all of our landlords are in-state people. And there is a significant problem with somebody getting a section eight voucher to be used in a house that has absolutely no maintenance done to deplorable living conditions. And there is nobody overseeing the person where we're trying to do the right thing to give them an ability to stay warm and dry. And the and the program doesn't have any that I imagine is a federal issue. At least that's how it's always been presented to us. But there's just not the funding or the follow through to take care of the landlords who have standards they're supposed to meet, but nobody enforces those standards. And, you know, the final aspect to all of that is we have a number of properties that are in significant disrepair, that are significantly behind in their utility bills, that currently do not have water, for example, for over a year that people occupy, that are behind on their taxes. And the legislation this past year that added an additional year before we can take action on a tax sale means that there's in the best possible case, three and a half years before we can get somebody out of their house who the rest of the town is paying their tax bill for, that are not taking care of their home. And in a couple of the cases, not not living here.
Not a summer to discuss with Joe Major about.
And just to piggyback on Tom's thing here, we were up in St. John's Valley the other night helping with the search for this gentleman. My guy actually got the tip that that's why he's in custody, so somebody approached him. But he was hiding in a drug house next door to his apartment that is one of these things where some old lady owns it and it's gone in complete disrepair. And people were living in there. And again, it's not out of state owner that she may be out of state, but like, I think that there's plenty of things we could like. I would talk to the fire marshals because their office is the one that's in charge of like the rental stuff, right? So they enforce kind of the rental code. And I think adding some more teeth to rental codes and also maybe Vermont looks into incorporating some sort of laws like HUD requires for section eight people, but having some mechanisms to force that on the state level. Because what we see here in Windsor, what I've seen all across the state is that some of these places are where the crazy stuff's going on. And honestly, the corporations are the ones that take care of the best care of some of the apartments. I mean, they might be a not-for-profit or whatever old Windsor village and all that is. But I think sometimes with the corporate structure, and even I kept saying Blackrock, these companies aren't directly buying homes, they're investing in companies that do. And I think when you try to hammer on, we also need landlords, we also need people that want to invest. And I think it's very hard for landlords to operate in the state now. And again, like I deal with serving civil process and evictions. And it's very, very hard for landlords and to see some of these houses, the way that they're destroyed. I think there's a balance here. You know, do we, we need to hold tenants somewhat accountable and landlords. But I think really, I would dig in, I would talk to the state fire marshals first and foremost. And I think you're going to get a lot of input from them on how what you're trying to do could push forward. As it's explained now, I think that that's really a little choppy and cumbersome. And I think that that might not be the best way to push forward. But I think giving more teeth to enforcing regulations where we have or should have would make more sense.
Yes.
Hi, Elizabeth, Paul Woodman. So hi, so I I have a logistics of what you talk, first of all, I'm going to have to say the Home Share Vermont. I didn't really know about it. I know about the little homes, you want to do a little home on your prop. This Home Share Vermont is phenomenal. Sounds like a great idea and I'd love to see that, you know, somehow out more that people get a little bit more exposed. I love how you're saying you can actually assist with connecting folks together. And yes, it would be great for our elderly folks, it'd be great for someone who has just a home that, you know, a little extra income and then someone else has a warm home. And you might even be able to build a relationship against amongst a couple of folks, which is exceptional. What I'm picking up for, let's say, with the with the properties that we're talking about, I have a pretty good idea what you're talking about. And what I'll do for my for my responsibility is I pieced everything together the best I could. And as I talk with town folks, I'm going to see what their what their thoughts are, what you're talking about too. And try to give you a little bit of input if they say, yeah, I think it's a good idea for legislation to assist with blight properties, if you want to call it that. Or maybe there might be a different opinion about what you're presenting to us. The way I see it is looking for opinions and thoughts on what we think about it. And it's not realistically only what we think about it sitting at this table. It's about connecting with our your constituents, our constituents and getting their input also. So I'll do the best I can to carry that message out to the general public and give you some information. Now, some folks feel about that, how's that sound?
That sounds great, Paul. That is exactly what I'm looking for. I again, I don't, I don't have a bill like particularly laid out. We don't even have a legislative council lawyer assigned to our committee to draft bills at the moment. But and I don't actually know whether I'm going to be on housing. I'm just trying to think of ways that that I can help Windsor. And I was thinking about the the owner that owns, I think, several commercial properties downtown that seem to over and over or kind of revolving door properties. And I just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to help really.
It's appreciated.
Yeah, we didn't mean to beat you up on it. It's just.
Yeah. They're really, they're just raw ideas. And I one of one of the thoughts I had was, you know, if somebody inherited a property and they want it, they let it go derelict and it became a health hazard and whatnot. To find a mechanism to increase their their property taxes dramatically to force them to throw it to a tax sale. And then if somebody bought it through that mechanism, through a tax sale, they would be required to commit to improving the property rather than just doing the same thing over and over again. I don't know, I'm spitballing. And again.
We appreciate that, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I got a couple other ideas. So you talk about helping Windsor and just like Vermont as a whole. These are more like the criminal justice side, but I know there's some push to change Vermont's felony possession of a firearm law to represent or to mimic the federal statute, the 922G federal statute. Because in Vermont, you could be a felon, but if it wasn't certain violent felonies, it's not illegal by Vermont standards to possess a firearm. So if we find something like that, we have to push that federally. Also, I'm looking for some sponsors in the House. I think I've got some in the Senate for a stolen firearms bill. Because right now, if you steal like a Glock, let's say it's valued at $450, a pistol, that's not a felony. But if you stole a $999 iPhone, that's a felony. So I'm looking for, and I'll follow up with you, some stolen firearms and possessing stolen firearms. Because again, we treat a stolen firearm like it's just any other piece of equipment. And it'd be like a petty larceny or, you know, depending on the value. And also if you commit crimes while armed. So I'll reach out to you on that because I think at a state level, we need, you know, we pull in, we pulled some stolen guns off folks. And again, it's a, you know, possession of stolen property misdemeanor thing, but sorry.
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to sponsor a bill like that, Ryan.
Send you over some stuff I got.
If I could summarize our, the property issue for us is that the private equity out of state owner sounds like buzzwords to make we blame people who aren't here. They don't do us any good. If it's all about us, any property owner that is derelict in the care for their building would face whatever, whatever the consequence that comes up. So get get rid of that, doesn't matter where they live or what their corporate structure is. More teeth to enforce landlord rights because people I personally here in Windsor, they will not invest more in their buildings because if they get away from section eight housing, they can't get rid of tenants who don't pay the rent. And if they can't get rent from their tenants, they're not going to invest in their building. And section eight pays the rent, but there's no oversight to require any maintenance. So when you have a guaranteed check, no competition, no, and no ability to get a different tenant in. If you're of a certain mindset, there's no better way to make money than minimize your investment and maximize your revenue. And that is exactly that's the landlord we have here in town that has revolving door of people that has significant crime activity, significant dereliction of buildings. But he will not get away from section eight because there's no enforcement and the there is no ability to evict a tenant that has, I'm going to say no. Eventually you get somebody out, but it's not a good business model to go three, six, eight months without collecting rent and then being asked to invest in your building. If we could get some more teeth on that and get rid of the private equity out of state person to be responsible. And the final, I guess, last thing I wanted to just mention, Burlington is putting out a program where they are issuing fines against building owners who don't maintain their buildings. That doesn't have to go through the tax sale process, which is a multi-year process. My my concern would be is like all of the fines we already have, you take them to court and they won't support. But if there was a way that we could legitimately issue fines for vacant buildings that are unsafe or or sites of illegal activity, that can motivate somebody because then we could go right, right to court and collect the fines and it would be an immediate consequence for their failure to act.
I'll do it, Tom.
All right. This this spring will look for shiny new facades other than just the new building.
I want to throw one thing out there. I'm not sure if there's anything that you could do to help with this, but it's kind of related to this. So I'm just, I'm going to throw it out there. I recently found out that this is happening locally. It can't be the only one. But someone passed away and that person owns a house. And this person was not involved with the greatest people. But now drug dealers and drug addicts are squatting in the deceased person's house. And the family of the deceased person cannot get them out. And I don't know what can be done in situations like that.
So their residents, because they've lived there. So some of these situations, it goes back to the Vermont's eviction process, a scenario that you're probably speaking of or similar ones. They had people in there that set up residency. It takes 30 days, you live in a place in Vermont, you sleep on the couch, you're resident. And then you have to be evicted through a formal eviction process through the courts, which is not a simple process. And but it also gets into, you know, again, it's a lot of complexity and nuance when you get to landlord tenant laws that probably not the time to discuss them here, 10 past eight.
No, I just wanted to throw it out there because it was happening locally and I just, my heart goes out to the family.
Do you know whether the person left the house to anybody or is the the house intestate?
I will reach out to them. I do know the families, so I have some questions. I just, I recently was made aware of it and it just.
Well, why don't you drop me an email about it and.
Elizabeth, they were tenants, they lived there, person died, but they're still tenants and residents. They have residency, so there's a formal eviction process in the works, but yeah.
Did the eviction process start before the person died?
No, no. So anyways, we're getting really off track, but.
Let's get back on our meeting.
Okay, well, I think this is probably the last time that I'll be able to come and meet with you before the session starts. But I'd really love to set up a regular time to to meet. I this year, I'm going to be commuting a lot more back and forth than I have in the past. And so my evening availability, I'd love to just get a regular time that I come to meet with you, maybe once a month, if that's possible. Then I can tell you what's what's coming down the pike and get get your responses from it or get, you know, get input from you.
That sounds like a great plan.
That's the same thing we talked about with Joe. He said the same thing, as things come down the pipe, he'll reach out, we'll communicate, we kick it out to constituents and to get a bit better feeling what's, you know, on how folks feel about certain issues. Yes, thank you, Elizabeth.
Okay, should I, should I stay in touch with Jeffrey about it? Or should I like, should if things arise quickly, shall I just inform Jeffrey and ask her to pass things on to the rest of you?
Absolutely. I'd probably CC Tom because he's going full time here, but.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You too.
Happy holidays.
Bye for now.
So now we get to do the town manager's report.
I have so much survey and budget, we've already talked about it, can move along. I've been busy with the budget, so not a lot of other stuff.
So I think we need a motion to sign the orders.
Make the motion.
Second, the margin.
Perfect, Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 We'll sign those orders.
All right.
Are there are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Come on, Kathy, something.
Okay.
I'm going to also send Elizabeth an email to kind of give the perspective of a landlord who's actually dealing with issues and have dealt with them for 15 plus years. And the laws are focused, as you guys were talking about, the laws are focused only on the tenant. The landlords are evil, the tenants are victims. And I haven't had a tenant move out yet. It didn't cost me six months worth of their rent, minimum, sometimes over years worth of their rent to be able to put it back in condition again. They just trash places. And, you know, I, the only reason that stopped is I raised the rent so high that the only people that are going to afford that are the kind of people who are, you know, are going to respect it because also the deposit is high and they want that back. So in the section eight thing, the Hampshire is very, very different. If you go to get any assistance in section eight, face in two inspectors, the city inspector and the fire marshal. If you go to get any assistance in Section 8, they send two inspectors in, the city inspector and the fire marshal. And they go through and they get, pick the hell up. Because a tenant, I had a tenant that just wanted one month's worth of assistance. It cost me more money than what the assistance was gonna be, but they'd already come in, so I had to make those approvals. And I don't mind, because there are things that need to be done. But it may be sensitive looking around, there are laws now for egress windows. Nobody has them. You go look at the second quarters and, you know, his bedroom, they don't have them. And I care. So it goes back to discussion about the fire marshal on that side. And I think if there's anything we can encourage that the state legislature do, is maybe expand the state fire marshal office and make them the enforcers of these things and not have to lay it on to all the municipalities and stop every little town building their own, their own structure to try to handle these problems. That, I mean, our population is so small. We're a tiny piece of a smaller area outside of Boston. They don't have 30 fire marshals, you know, it's, it makes no sense. One can do the job and the state should be doing this stuff.
Oh, I'm not gonna name any names, but a member said you went over your time, or non-member.
Yeah, that's okay.
How about board member comments? Ryan, do you want to start out with board member comments?
Yeah, we just, we talked about Chief Frank being appointed to the board there. Again, she's also, Tom had talked about, she's on the criminal justice council, a very active member there. She's also, there is a request for staffing at St. Johnsbury. We've, we have people up there all week, but covering next week too. And she's leading the charge on trying to fill in those shifts for, the St. Johnsbury PD is pretty banged up right now. So I just thought that, you know, talk about somebody stepping up on this, you know, from our little town, the state level, being recognized. And I thought that was pretty cool.
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, a happy holiday, however you celebrate. And my thoughts and prayers are with all of the people who are grieving through these holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone. And I want to, again, thank the budget committee for coming in, getting on board, getting ready for this. It's much appreciated throughout the town. You know, your service is immeasurable. And Jenny, I just want to, you know, welcome you too for your first, your first roundabout with it. And thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. You're welcome.
I don't get to say anything.
No, I'm good.
I'm just me, I just.
Can I, can I, can I, I've been lighting?
Great, so we're gonna adjourn this meeting at 8:15.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays and everything else that's going on.